All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation from Chaplain Judy Kurt of the Clayton County Police Department, Sector One, and will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. And please, Chaplain, as you come forward, I'm going to ask that you say a special prayer for Commissioner Anderson, her family, whose father, Henry Anderson, passed away earlier this week. So if you could, please pray for the Anderson family. Please stand with me here.
Our great God and King, the sovereign head of the universe, the one who sits on the circumference of this world, the one who governs and provides good leadership. We're grateful for the men and women representing Clayton County, District One, on today. We thank you for good leadership, which is a blessing, and bad leadership is a curse. In God, as we're praying, oh God, for the governance of this meeting, that you would give guidance, leadership, and decision-making, and strength. We're asking a special prayer for Mr. Henry Anderson, for his surviving daughter, Dr. Anderson, our commissioner representative on this evening. We're asking, Lord, that you would comfort her heart, comfort the hearts of her family, comfort all those that are involved with the loss of this great man. We pray that you give them peace, which surpasseth all understanding. Ask that you wrap your loving arms around the family, any surviving family members, that you would keep them in this season. For all their lost someone during this special time of the year, we pray, God, that you would bless them and strengthen their hearts. In this season, that you would surround them with family and loved ones that could guide them through these very dark and tender times. Life, like death, is complicated. And we pray, God, that you give strength, peace, and love where it's needed. We ask you, kind master, through the furtherance of this meeting, that you would touch hearts and minds, that there be a spirit of unity, that we will release, oh God, any confusion into the atmosphere. We said it, friend, let it go. We pray for humility, courage, strength, power, and strong leadership. For those that sit on the watchman of Clayton County, we know that the city is not watched. Unless you keep the city, it won't be covered. So we thank you, God, for all that are represented here, all that represent your hands and feet in the universe, all those that are gathered here today for the safety, for the direction, and for the strength of Clayton County. We thank you so much for providing us with great leadership in this season. And it's in your precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 15th, 2022, regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Go ahead, Commissioner Hammer.
Yes. Yes, I do. I would like number 16, the ordinance 2022-252, county medical examiner, to be put on the regular agenda.
You clear on that, Madam Clerk?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
And also, number 24, 2022-260. I have a lot of questions. At first, I was just going to ask it be put on the regular agenda, but now I would like to pull it for further discussion. I have questions regarding director's salary, is it going to be a civil service position?
You're wanting to pull it to take it off the agenda?
Well, no, I tell you what. Yes, I do. And then next time, when it comes, then we get the explanation. But yes, I have several questions.
All right, and there's a motion on floor to pull Resolution 2022-260, authorizing the creation of Grants Management Division. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any others? Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask that item 13, approval for Plan for Behavior Health Crisis Center, be moved to after executive session at the request of the staff. So I'm asking that to be taken off the consent agenda and placed to be heard after executive session.
Which one is that, Jim?
Item 13.
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Also, I would like to add to the consent agenda, a request through, by Parks and Recreation Library Services, Senior Citizen, Senior Services, rather, for modified hours for the holiday season that encompasses Thanksgiving as well as Christmas. And I think each board member has a list of those dates and closures.
So what are we doing with that?
We're adding it to the consent agenda. Any others?
Can you read it as well, though? Because if you're adding it, then it needs to be read into the record as well. You're asking us to add something that wasn't written?
Well, I thought there was a, it was, was this not disseminated out as well? I just want to make sure that, not, not, not for you. No, okay. So for the, to spread it off across the minutes, I'm going to read it. Please find requests for amended hours and facility closure for the holiday season for 2022. There will be a request to add to the agenda tonight, is what we're doing. Holiday schedule for Parks and Recreation Library Services, Senior Services Department, for the Thanksgiving period, Wednesday, November 23rd, the hours will be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Will be closed on Thursday, November 24th, which is a county holiday, as well as Friday, November 25th, which is also a holiday for the county. And then Saturday, November 26th, they will be closed as well. And then Monday, 28th, we will resume regular hours. For the Christmas and New Year's period, Friday, December 23rd, which is a holiday, will be closed. Saturday, December 24th, which is the Christmas Eve, we will be closed, as well as Sunday, December 25th. On Monday, 26th, it'll be a holiday closure as well. And then Friday, December 30th, the hours will be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then Saturday, December 31st, will be closed, that whole day. And normal, no, on January 2nd, which is on that Monday, will be closed for a county holiday as well.
Can we get a copy of that, please?
You got a copy on the, yes.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What day does Christmas fall on this year? What day of the week?
It's a Sunday.
I thought in the past, if, if the holiday was on a Sunday, then we take that Monday off.
And that's what it's on here. Monday, 26th, is closed.
Okay, same thing.
Holiday for close.
Okay.
Any other questions about that?
Yes.
I'm looking at it. I do have a question. December 23rd, are all the employees off, or just the Parks and Recreation?
That's modified hours, state. That's a reduced schedule.
No, it says December 23rd, holiday closed. Are all the employees in Clayton County off?
Oh, December 23rd, I'm sorry.
Are they not?
Yes. They're closed on the Friday for, I think, for, what is it, Christmas Eve, since it falls on Saturday.
Okay. And I, I do have something else to be pulled for the regular agenda.
Hold on a second, let's make sure that.
Okay.
Commissioner Franklin has no other questions for us?
No, I don't. I just wanted to make sure that this is consistent with all employees. And probably the same question for Thanksgiving, it's just long as all of the employees are off that day and not just Parks and Rec.
Yeah, now, the regular.
I mean, we know the weekend now.
Yeah, and the regular holidays that, for the closure, we approved when we approved the budget.
Right, but the Monday, oh, Monday is resuming regular hours. I see the note. Got it.
Commissioner Hammer.
Yes. I'm trying to find it, the one regarding the $6.5 million? I don't see it now. I didn't bring my laptop.
G.G. Grant, is that the one you're talking about?
No, it's the grant that we have to, have to spend in six weeks. I want to pull it for regular agenda for discussion.
That was number.
I thought it was two, is it 259?
23, item 23.
Yes, 259. Please, pull it for regular agenda.
You clear on that, Madam Clerk?
I'm clear.
Okay, are there any others?
Just for the regular agenda, of course, I would need to abstain. But I could just do that, it's no problem, as opposed to pulling it out in terms of the minutes.
Okay. All right. Any others? If not, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Agreed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Commissioner Nannos.
Our next item is a proclamation, Parks and Recreation Department Award Recognition. Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize award-winning Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department. Whereas, the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department was chosen by Georgia Recreation and Park Association as winners in three categories. And whereas, Georgia Recreation and Park Association recognizes exemplary agencies and individuals who deliver recreation, park, or leisure-related services. And whereas, the Thanksgiving pop-up event was awarded Outstanding Special Event on November 18th. The Thanksgiving pop-up event was held at Virginia Burton Gray Recreation Center. Families were invited to pick up turkeys, fresh vegetables, sweet tea, and other holiday food items. UPS and the Atlanta Hawks partnered with Clayton County Parks and Recreation for outstanding events. All of the items were donated and approximately 120 families benefited. And whereas, Mr. Ernest Jones was awarded Outstanding Support Staff for the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Operations category. Whether it's his ability to handle maintenance, as well as assisting patrons with wave equipment at the front desk or assisting new staff, Mr. Jones' warm smile can be seen at South Clayton Recreation Center. He's an asset to the Clayton County Parks and Recreation team. And whereas, Outstanding Project Class A was awarded to Spivey Splash Water Park, this award recognizes excellence in park or facility improvements and developments. Clayton County International Park was restructured and rebuilt, utilizing special local option sales tax, or SPOSS funds, to create the Spivey Splash Water Park. And whereas, the mission of Georgia Recreation and Park Association is to support and promote recreation and park agencies within the state of Georgia while encouraging healthy lifestyles for our citizens. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and congratulate Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department for its outstanding accomplishment. We encourage the citizens of Clayton County to join us. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the sale of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 15th day of November in the year 2022.
I want to say congratulations to the Aquatic Center Director, because they had a fall festival this past weekend, and I heard nothing but great things about it. And so you can show that you can swim and still serve the community at the same time. So thank you for what you've done.
Our next proclamation is Central Services Department receiving the prestigious 2022 Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award from the National Procurement Institute, Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors Clayton County Central Services Department Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. Whereas, Clayton County Board of Commissioners are proud to recognize the Central Services Department for the prestigious 2022 Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement from the National Procurement Institute, Incorporated. And whereas, the AEP program encourages the development of excellence and continued organizational improvement to earn the award annually. Central Services has achieved this milestone for the last two years. And whereas, this prestigious award is earned by those organizations that demonstrate excellence in obtaining a high score based on standardized criteria. The criteria is designed to measure innovation, professionalism, productivity, e-procurement, and leadership attributes of the procurement organization. As established by the NPI Board of Directors, the criteria for receiving the award require that the nominee has made outstanding contributions to the development and progress of NPI and the public procurement process. Whereas, for 2022, the United States and Canada, there were only 171 successful applicants. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, officially acknowledge the Central Services Department commitment to procurement through excellence, through best practices, strategic procurement, and continuous improvement on behalf of our citizens. Do hereby extend this expression of our pride in this prestigious milestone achieved by Central Services. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the sale of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 15th day of November in the year 2022.
Great job, great job, y'all. Thank y'all so much for all the hard work y'all put in. There you go, all right.
This is by the Office of Economic Development.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. We have a presentation tonight for you from the Retail Strategies Group, which we contracted with back in May, to assist us in attracting retail that our community needs in the various districts of the county. So this is an update from Mr. Mill Graves with Retail Strategies Group, to talk about the work done thus far, and information on certain brands that they are scouting for Clayton County. Mill, would you come forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to see you all again. I think it's been a few months since we were in the market doing our boots on the ground, but today is meant to be an abbreviation of our recruitment plan presentation, which was provided to Erica a few weeks ago. And this is generally about an hour and a half to two-hour-long presentation, so we're going to keep this nice and short and abbreviated. But really, it's, it's also a timeline of where we've been, kind of in this partnerships, and we started in, in April, and have kind of executed things. So I'll walk through a little bit of that as well. Just to refresh you, kind of what our role is, we are an extension of this community and the districts that you all represent, as well as Erica's office. So as part of, of Erica's office and her goal for, for retail recruitment and improving quality of life, you know, attracting workforce, retaining workforce with the retail amenities in the community, that is part of the strategic vision for this community and part of what we're doing as, as an extension of that, is to implement a strategy to attract and retain a lot of the retail that is here. So retail, you know, it creates taxes, it creates jobs, and it creates quality of life. So this new business is, is what makes you competitive from an economic development standpoint. That's how we see it. I have a background in industrial recruitment as well, and it's really what attracts and retains your workforce in addition to the housing stock you have. So really, what our, our, our role is, and why we exist, is to really connect those goals with the challenges of retail attraction and recruitment, right? So from our perspective, this takes time, it takes resources, it takes understanding your market, and it takes understanding the real estate, and it's, it takes pushing all of that and moving it forward in a comprehensive strategy over a period of time to be successful. So what does this partnership look like to date? So in April, we approved this contract. In June, we paid year one, as far as the invoice goes, and we got to work from there. I believe it was July when we sat down with most of you all to, to discuss some of the challenges and opportunities and desires that you all see within each district, to attract retail, and what those might be, which included, you know, identifying things in the community and surveying Erica's team to understand what's desirable here, what do people want, what is missing, right? And a lot of our job is to identify the market and identify those desires and, and kind of facilitate those opportunities to meet in the middle, to see some success and new investment as it relates to that. And that includes feedback from these end users. And we hit the ground running after that. So when we were in the market, a big part of what we were doing was inventorying real estate, meeting with the community, engaging that, understanding and driving all of these corridors within the districts, to really get a feel beyond what we had already discovered from that 30,000-foot view and looking at the data. And so then fast forward to September is when we presented this recruitment plan to Erica and her team. We call it the first 100 days of discovery. It really takes us that long to really understand your all's fingerprint as a community, and then understand an action plan and begin implementing that action plan with your all's feedback and approval. And part of what we're doing here, too, in addition to making phone calls and getting the feedback and, and basically implementing this recruitment plan, the goal is to market the community beyond regional trade shows and conferences, but, but nationally, right? So we go to about 15, 15, 16 shows nationally, International Council of Shopping Centers, as well as Retail Live. The first one of those where you guys were represented was in October here in Atlanta. And the second one was in Nashville, which was in later October, which was Retail Live event. So those are two shows where, you know, a lot of the, the real estate and the, and the data that we've discovered in, in this process was presented to that, to that end, to end users, as well as decision-makers in the retail industry, to try to put you guys in front of, of the folks that are looking at site selection opportunities across metro Atlanta. And then we're here. So this is kind of where we're at, right? So in this update, real quickly, oops, excuse me. I do want to reiterate that, you know, retail, from our perspective, it's complicated. There's a lot of macro things, economically speaking, that are happening in the market. E-commerce plays a role. We just went through a pandemic and are still weathering a lot of those challenges as well, and a lot of retailers are pivoting, as well as consumers and how they shop and absorb those retail amenities. So collectively, all of these things, retailers are downsizing, people are buying things online more often, picking up curbside. You know, site selection is getting more competitive as real estate costs go up, construction costs go up. All of these timelines matter when it factors into decision-making and opening a new store, right? And then another thing for us, too, is there's the data, how do people perceive your community? And then for us, you know, the real estate drives the decision-making process, right? So that gets the deal done. If somebody wants to be in your community and the numbers work, the demographics work, is there a good spot for them to be at? And does that make sense from a financial standpoint for them to get their return on their money? So big picture, why, with, with all these challenges, we really look at this thing, and from a timeline perspective, the average retail, real estate, site selection decision and transaction can take 18 to 36 months, right? So a lot of what we're doing right now in this discovery period with the 100 days and the feedback and the conferences that we're, we're doing currently, it's planting those seeds and getting that feedback and advancing those conversations and deals to hopefully generate activity, you know, in the coming months and then in coming years. Want to touch on e-commerce real quickly. The stuff's not going away, right? Everybody continues to buy online and purchase goods in that manner, whether it's curbside or ordering on Amazon. From our perspective, we really see this as, as, you know, something that's going to continue to grow, but retailers are going to have to shift as a result, right? So a lot of, the only way that retailers make more money is to increase sales in existing store online or open new stores, right? So it's just getting more dynamic in how the, the retail big box and the boxes are interacting with the consumer. And as a result of that, it's getting a little bit more dynamic, and quite honestly, it's, it's more fun. Retail's more fun as a, as a result of that. You know, you, you have the opportunity to have your groceries delivered. You can do your curbside pickup at Chick-fil-A. So this, for us, as an industry, is the biggest shift that we've really seen since the inception of the shopping center, right? So this is something that, that is driving a lot of these decisions, and there's more activity out of these retailers and new retailers expanding as a result of this, this dynamic. So real quickly, I'm going to walk through the high-level market analysis. There are thousands of data points that we look at and have shared with Erica and are accessible to the community and her team. And more importantly, what we try to do is pull the data points that these retailers have and are looking at for their models on site selection, right? So each retailer has a certain model that they're gonna, they're gonna look at initially to make site selection decisions. And so you guys understand boundaries in this community, whether it's your district, whether it's the cities, the municipalities, or whether it's the county limits. And so, you know, if you look at the population of Clayton County, 293,000 and change, you know, in context of Georgia, there's 10 million people, right? Retailers see it differently. You know, they don't really look at these lines that we all, we all kind of talk about from a municipal standpoint. So it's drive times, it's density of households, concentration of commercial nodes, radius rings. And so what we try to do is, is paint that picture and speak the same language that the retailers are, are looking at, you know, having the same data, speaking the same language to, to convey the opportunities that are in your community. And then what we do in addition to that is look at mobile data analytics. And so that's kind of the piece of the puzzle for us that helps define your custom trade area beyond what those drive times are, those radius rings, as well as those, the city limits or the county limits, right? This graphic right here doesn't indicate this, and I can get those images for you and some specific stuff that we provided Erica about mobile data, but what it does is really capture where those consumers are coming from. And a lot of times, and in many cases for Clayton County, it's well beyond the areas that we would have thought, right? And so for your all's custom trade area, it's closer to the 350,000 versus the 270,000 and change that I just mentioned. Whoops, excuse me. Excuse me, 293,000. So looking at demographics, age, projected population is always something that, that retailers are, are wanting to know, where the housing starts happening and where, and how do we identify new nodes for growth, where we can potentially open a grocery store or a restaurant? These are things that retail decision-makers are really looking at years in advance before they actually secure pieces of real estate and make decisions that, that we all, you know, end up getting involved in from, from a decision-making standpoint jurisdictionally speaking. Income's incredibly important, right? A lot of that, too, is, is, you know, conveying where those improvements are coming. So, you know, we like to look at the last five, 10 years, where have the incomes increased over that time? So really painting the community in, in a positive light and a unique narrative as it relates to the demographics. Number of households, critically important. Average housing unit value, a lot of these data points are things that, that you guys probably understand and know as a community. You know, do you have vacant housing, what's occupied, what's renter? Certain retailers are going to look at those statistics to make decisions. You know, people per household, families, the type of consumer that exists in your community. We have profiled a lot of those predominant psychographics within the market, and those are all data points and information that we can not only provide to your developers and your brokers as they market opportunities, but also the retailers themselves, as they try to learn your all's community in a better way. And then daytime population, so 317,000 is the county, you're looking at a little bit over 400,000 if you look at a custom trade area, when, when, you know, piecing in part different, different retailers in the market and understanding where they draw from. So that's a lot of people, right? You know, a lot of retailers are just going to look at that, that city limit, that 10, 10-minute drive time to try to make decisions. When you start to understand that, you know, you could potentially capture 400,000 people in a location based off workers, commuting, all of those things, that's a different narrative and a different data point that we can push to help market these opportunities. One thing that we like to do is, is compare, you know, Clayton County, our partner communities, with other-like communities. And we look at different retail nodes across the county and do a 10-minute drive from, 10-minute drive time, excuse me, say, from Walmart, right? And we'll look at different data points within that, so residential population, daytime population within that 10-minute drive, income, and then also how much retail sales volume is actually within that 10-minute drive. And by comparing different nodes, we're actually able to compare parts of Clayton County to different parts of the country and regionally in the southeast. So if you look at, look at this, you see Columbia, South Carolina on there. look at, look at this, you see Columbia, South Carolina on there, North Charleston, South Carolina, Columbus, Georgia, Stockbridge, Norcross. These are all peer communities that we stack you all up against. And the reason we do that is we want to look at what they have, you know, from a different retail sector, whether it's grocery, you know, home furnishings, clothing accessories, general merchandise, coffee. And then better understand where you guys are lacking in those sectors, right? So if they've got, for example, two specialty grocery stores and you have zero, that for us is an opportunity and a data point that we can then take to these decision-makers to say, something's not adding up because you guys are peers as it relates to these different data points, right? I mentioned our boots-on-the-ground component when we came in July, right? This is a living, breathing component because real estate changes hands. You have different brokers that are representing sites. Developers are coming into the market. And so we really rely on Erica and her team and that collaborative effort to understand this. But more importantly, our goal is to inventory every available A-plus real estate site that we see in the market. And we do that and put it in there to better understand, you know, kind of what those opportunities are. So if a retailer is interested in the market, we have product that we can then push to them. And we build the relationship with those folks that are either local landowners or the local brokers or regional brokers that are representing it. So a lot of what we're doing and a lot of what this community is supporting, you're supporting the private sector to help market themselves better, to help connect the dots there and to help facilitate some of these opportunities with the decision-makers that we have and the relationships that we have. So a lot of what we're looking with, with real estate, we call it home-run real estate. The way I like to frame it is, you know, main and main, right? Where it's got really good visibility, it's got high traffic counts, a lot of retailers want to look at something that is at least 20,000 vehicles per day or more. Oftentimes, it's in that 25,000 vehicles per day range. It's got to have parking, right? It's got to have the right ingress egress. You know, a lot of tenants want to be like, want to be next to like tenants, right? So there's certain junior anchors, for example, like TJ Maxx may want to be next to Hobby Lobby. Things like that that really come into play for their decision-making components. And this is all up here to understand that the data is really important, but for us and for our team and our collaboration with Erica and her team is that the real estate and the deal-making really drive this process. That is where we spend the majority of our time, the majority of our conversations and phone calls. A lot of it is, yeah, I want to be in that market, but is there a good site? Or that's a great site, but it costs too much? Or I'm not going to be able to get it rezoned? These are all things that we're tackling on a day-in, day-out, you know, way with some of the end users that we're working with. So if you kind of look at our database that we have in-house proprietarily, these are just some snapshots from that. But we've looked at each of the districts, you know, through some of the feedback that we've gotten from you all and through Erica, looking at District 1, District 2, 3, and 4, to try to understand, you know, where some of these opportunities are. Those little green dots that you see there are actual sites that we have in our database that we consider the low-hanging fruit sites where we think we can generate activity and get feedback and potential new investment on. Excuse me. There again is Morrow and Lovejoy. And let's get to the good stuff because this is the exciting part. Excuse me for the back-and-forth there. So another part of this analysis, too, is understanding what sectors, right, that the community is lacking in, where the leakage is coming from, from a retail standpoint. So either folks are not being served by the existing retail that's here and they're going somewhere else for it. And so through our analysis, we've basically identified these top areas. And some of this is also what you guys have told us as a community. Restaurants, clothing and accessories, and miscellaneous retail, general merchandise are three things that stand out from a number standpoint, quantitatively, but also from a community standpoint that are lacking, right? So full-service restaurants is something that we've heard across the board within this, within this engagement and this partnership, that that should be a focus. There's no late-night dining. There's no full-service restaurant for folks to sit down on. Collectively as a whole, there's about $237 million in leakage in the county, right? So that's in a lot of different sectors, grocery included. But these are your top three. So I've got, you know, a couple images up here. And one thing that I really want to stress is what we do day in and day out is highly confidential. Okay? So a lot of what we've presented, Erica, and the conversations that we have day in and day out as it relates to, you know, the real estate opportunities, as well as the feedback and the end users that we're talking to, you know, that's confidential, right? Until it becomes a real deal. So a lot of this is up here for you guys to get an idea of the type of retailers and restaurants that we're going after. And one thing I want to stress is that, you know, we hear this oftentimes, is the communities want a certain type of retailer. We want an Olive Garden, right? But the important thing to note is, is Olive Garden expanding right now, right? So what we're doing each quarter, each year, is really understanding what these retailers are doing from an expansion standpoint and trying to connect those dots to your available real estate. So some of these images up here, those are retailers that are in expansion mode. So understanding who those are is really important. And we get a lot of that feedback from those conferences we go to saying, hey, we're going to do 20 locations. We want to do 10 in metro Atlanta. You know, Nashville's more of a priority than Atlanta, or whatever the case may be, and trying to go after, go after some of these concepts, right? So these are all concepts that you may be familiar with, some of which you may not be. Some are in the market, some are expanding into Atlanta, right? So, and then here's some of your general merchandise, as well as clothing and accessories. All of these prospects are in expansion mode, and we have relationships with all of them. And then, you know, some of the stuff that's more a little local, regional, you know, eclectic, entrepreneurial, we're always on the lookout for new and emerging concepts, concepts that are franchise-driven, which there are a whole lot. Much of retail right now and retail expansion is in the restaurant space. You know, 40% to 45% of expansion this year is slated to be in the restaurant space. A lot of that has to do with the relation of post-pandemic. But also, too, a lot of those are franchise-driven, right? So how do we connect the dots with franchisees that have the market or potential entrepreneurs that are in Clayton County or in the region that want to open something here? So that's something we're working on as well. Finally, this thing just keeps clicking. It's bouncy. So want to end on this real quick with the retail timeline. What I mentioned earlier, 18 to 36 months is really what we stress on the average from site selection to, you know, actual decision on moving forward with the deal and opening, 18 to 36 months on average. It can go faster, but that's really kind of what we see across the board. You know, grocery deals take three to five years in a lot of cases. In some cases, they take longer. So if you think about it, you know, the retailer is driving this decision. I showed all those sites that are in the different districts. I would love to put a certain end user in whatever district you want it in, right? But at the end of the day, they're the ones that drive the decision and we don't control the real estate. So that's something to keep in mind. There's a lot of sites that are looked at, right? There are hundreds of sites that are reviewed and a very small percentage of those are going to get to opening. And a lot of it has to do with this timeline here. So, and it's got to make money, right? I used to say this, you know, when I first started in retail about 10 years ago, is that you can give them the free land, you can build them the building, right? Let's just say it's Starbucks. And do all that, they still not going to come. Because it has to make money, right? Because if it's losing money, it's bringing down their average sales across corporate, which is something they don't want to do because investors are not going to be happy, right? And that's going to impact their overall growth as a company. So it's got to make money. And as you see with this, there's a lot of people that are involved in this process. Okay? And so there could be hiccups all along the way. And where we really try to emphasize to communities is what can you control and what can we control as a team, right? So what can we work on with Erica and you all as leaders in this community to kind of make this an enticing environment for new retail and new development as it relates to commercial? So client reporting, I kind of touched on this. We've been, you know, we have a Basecamp kind of email system that we work with Erica on to update, and she shares information with us. So that's pretty regular, and we try to give updates as much as we possibly can. And particularly as, you know, feedback's coming in, positive and negative, we're providing that information. And real quickly, I just want to kind of leave you with about five leads or six leads, excuse me, that, you know, based off these conferences that we had in October. These are six that we're kind of running with and we feel pretty confident about. I can't guarantee anything, and some of this is in its initial stages, but we've gotten all positive feedback with two coffee concepts that are more of a regional focus, full-service restaurant and bar, a fast casual restaurant, Tex-Mex full service, and then full-service sports bar and restaurant. Okay? So those are all things that, you know, from a high level, from a data analysis, from an initial corridor look, look really good. A lot of these aren't down to the real estate component. But this is the kind of update and kind of feedback that we're trying to give Erica on a regular basis. And I'll kind of end with, you know, we've got conferences at the New Year ramping up. We're going to be going back out and pushing the community as best we can. I'm in Atlanta, so, you know, Clayton County is in the backyard, and it's easy for me to come down here and meet with the community and meet with Erica on a regular basis if need be. And then, you know, just want to reiterate, you know, thank you guys for the partnership. We're really excited about this. Like I said, the first 100 days has been a lot about discovery, but we feel like we've hit the ground running. We've got a lot of good momentum on some activity. And, you know, if we get one win, just one win, you know, the generated ad valorem and sales tax back to the community is going to really be positive to get the ROI for this partnership. And I feel confident that we can, you know, because it's a county-wide approach, that we can really, really get you guys some good stuff. It's good positive feedback and hopefully new investment. So with that, I will leave it to any questions you might have and pass it along.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I do. You used the word leakage, $236 million in leakage. What exactly is leakage?
Yeah, yeah. So essentially, it's where your market's underserved. It might not have that. And so essentially, it's where your market supply is less than your actual demand. So your consumer dollars that are there in the market. So if you have a certain X amount of households and their income and all of that added up within Clayton County is less than what the actual market supply, which would be sales, then that gap right there is where your void is, your gap for retail. And you divide it up by sector. So it could be grocery, it could be restaurants, it could be, you know, home and garden furnishings. And so that's a way for us to look at where there's an opportunity to capture those dollars that are already here, right? And so those folks that aren't, you know, shopping in this community, they might be going somewhere else, right? That's where the term leakage comes from, to spend those dollars. So, you know, just thinking off the top of my head, some of the analysis we've done, there's a lot of folks that go to Fayette County to shop there. People go to Henry County to shop. And they're spending those dollars there, which aren't being captured by that supply that's here and the sales.
Thank you. Also, were you looking at the, kind of the future businesses that are coming? The tech, the medical technology, some of those industries?
Yeah, we're really, we're focused more, and we do some medical commercial, but we're really focused on the national retail and the regional retail concepts. We do some hospitality as well. So, you know, that's really our focus here, not so much on the tech. And, you know, I think that's probably more in the traditional industrial recruitment space, office space, right? So we're, you know, a lot of what we're doing, too, we can get plugged into mixed-use projects and working with developers that are trying to develop a mixed-use product where retail is a component, where we would come in and, you know, if it's a developer that we know or Erica introduces us to them, you know, advising them on commercial space and how much retail should be there, what type, what type of business mix. So that's really our space that we try to stay in and play in. But I'd say hospitality is probably the only thing that would be a little bit different that we could focus on and work in a little bit more outside of that national retail scope.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. First, thank you for your presentation and thank you for meeting with each one of the districts. That was important. But I do want to go back to, I'm going to start with, go back to the restaurants that you were recommending.
Yeah.
We'll start there. It hasn't switched here yet, but I'll just look over here.
We're all on a delay.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Again, thank you for the work you're doing. And I know about the Miller's Ale House. But I can tell you, as Commissioner of District 3, one of the things I hear all the time is we don't want the same type of food. And when I'm looking at this, I got two barbecue places and then one, two, three, four Mexican places, which we love Tex-Mex, that's great, but we're saturated in that area as well. I saw on the next phase, you did put some oodles noodles, some stuff like that. But the Arizonas and the Chop House is extremely helpful. And then, of course, Italiano.
Yeah.
But one of the other things that I think that we have to help people to understand is that our population of people, we also like sushi. We want to have a sushi restaurant or a bistro of some sort. So the biggest thing is just giving a variety.
Yeah.
Personally, if another crab shack opened up, I'm going to wonder are they in crabs alive?
Yeah.
Because we got in our neighborhoods more crab shacks than anything.
Yeah.
So that's really what I would say to it. And then the other thing is when you were talking about the retail, I think one of the things to bear in mind is that, go to the retail selections as well, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I like the cider, though. And the community likes the cider. When I'm looking at this, this is still the lower end of retail. And so the citizens, at least within District 3, that I know are asking for a little bit more higher-end retail. And so that's why that leakage is coming through, because we don't have those opportunities. So I would just say, this is a start. We already have a Marshalls. We already have an Altitude.
Yeah.
We already, I mean, we don't need another Burks. Burks is, for people that don't know, is a sister store to one of the others.
Burks and Bells, yeah.
Yeah, Burks and Bells.
Well, so, you know, and you raised valid points. And I think we're going to take all that to heart and definitely. But as far as, this is just a snapshot, right? This is just to get you an idea of the types of end users that we're going to go after. And I mean, I think it's important for us to understand, you know, his retail strategies and, you know, for any community to diversify their, not only their retail mix, but their restaurant mix, right? To have different concepts out there. And I mean, when I said this is a very exciting time in retail, we are seeing more of that emerging, right? The different types of restaurants, particularly with that growth post-pandemic, that 40% to 45% of the retail growth coming from that space, that there are new concepts. And so I appreciate that feedback. And I think that's something that we'll focus on moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you mentioned about the diversity. We are a very diverse county.
Yeah.
If we want our citizens to remain here and spend their tax dollars here, then we got to make sure that we are providing them with the restaurants as well as the retail where they could stay here and enjoy their time without having to go outside of Clayton County. So just keep that in mind. Very diverse. We want to see different type of restaurants, as Commissioner alluded to, as well as the retail.
Well, thank you all for that. And I do think that post-pandemic, it really is kind of a, it's a big opportunity for that to think folks are understanding that they don't want to be like every other community as it relates to retail. And retailers are responding, businesses are responding as a result of that. And I think what we're going to end up with is a greater diversity or hopefully, you know, from a consumer standpoint, people vote with their feet and their dollars, right? So, you know, hopefully, that's kind of where we're headed. And I think that from a macro standpoint, we're feeling that, you know, from an industry standpoint. So thank you all.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rock.
Mr. Chairman, the board will now consider the consent agenda. For record, I would just like to announce this excludes Item 13, which will vote on after executive session, excludes Item 16, which is on the regular agenda, excludes Item 23, which is on the irregular agenda, and excludes Item 24, which was removed from the agenda. This also adds the amended senior services holiday schedule.
Ms., Mr. Chair, before we do that, there is a point of cleanup that I need to do. One is we've got to remove a couple of items because then I would be put in a position with having to vote on the entire consent agenda, which I apologize to the entire board. And the other note to make is I realized in sitting here that the information that was disseminated, which I studied, is quite different from what the final agenda was. I think there were about five to six items that were added. So that I remain in order on this board, I will need to ask the board to just entertain pulling items 2, 3, and 14. Just pull those items for a separate vote.
All right. There's been a motion to pull. Give me the numbers again.
I don't have to make a motion, but I just need to, I'm sorry, I messed up myself. I just need to let you know I need to pull 2, 3, and 14.
Take them separate.
Yes.
So it may... I'm sorry again. Give me the numbers.
2, 3, and 14. Two, three, and 14. So we may just have to take another vote on the consent agenda. Correct.
So.
I can make that motion if you don't mind. I would like to make a motion that we, I don't know if it's amend, but we need to approve the consent agenda absent of items two, three, and 14. I think that's the best way I can put it. Is that right?
Are we good, Mr. Reed?
Yes, that'll be fine. And so that you're going to do a separate vote on the consent agenda for two, three, and 14.
Correct.
Okay.
Sarah, second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, unanimous.
Our next item of approval is item number two.
Before you do that, so all you all did was just approve her motion to-
Take these three items separate.
Take those three items. So still, you need to do a vote to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, we're about to do that. But it's going to be absent of two, three, and 14.
Correct.
As well as the other four mentioned items as well.
So for the record, I want it to be clear, this will exclude items number 13, 16, 23, 24, and now two, 13, and 14.
No, three.
I'm sorry, two, three, and 14.
Yes, thank you.
So 13, 16, 23, 24, two, three, and 14.
Yes. I was so tempted to say bingo, calling out all those numbers.
All right, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Sarah, second.
Second.
Any questions on any other items? Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed. Issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number two, the approval of the November 8th special call meeting minutes.
Is there approval, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Special call meeting. Has a motion been made by Commissioner Hambrick? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed.
One abstention.
One abstention, three approvals.
Our next item is item number three, monthly report of contracts. This is, this will be presented by Carol Rogers, Central Services Director.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. First item, this is our number, this is the minute track number 7106. The request is to approve monthly copies of our monthly report of our contracts, contracts modification or change orders that are authorized by the Director of Central Services, myself or the COO. This report is being made pursuant to section code 2-107, which is our county code of ordinances as it pertains to informal processes. Do you want me to read those out? And we have a total of 19 for the month of October.
All right, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Three wanted passes.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number 14, human resources recommendation for CFO, presented by Human Resources Director Pamela Ambles.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. At the last board meeting, Human Resources made a presentation in regards to a recommendation for the Chief Financial Officer vacant position. Commissioner Franklin, I did not bring the jump drive for the presentation, but I have a copy of the presentation if you wanted to take a look at it. Thank you, ma'am. We discussed several things, but ultimately, the recommendation was to hire a chief financial officer. The pay range, 150,000 to 180,000 per year. We said closer to 180,000 if the candidate has financial certifications and multi-dimensional work experience. The request was also to hire deputy chief financial officers. We are currently allocated for two and we were requesting a pay range of 130,000 to 145,000 annually. We also make the recommendation to keep the central services reporting structure as it is. Human Resources did not agree with Terminus' recommendation to place central services under the CFO.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions. There a second? Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Three wanted passes.
Thank you all.
Our next item is item number 16, ordinance 2022-252, presented by Chief Staff Attorney Charles Reed.
Good evening. I was the chairman and vice chair and board of ordinance 2022-252. The ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County as amended specifically to amend Part One related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter Two Administration, Article One in general, to add a new section, 2-13 Medical Examiner, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations to provide for several ability to provide an effective date of this ordinance or for other purposes.
Is there a motion? So move. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Will someone please tell us the change that has taken place from some years ago when we decided not to do the medical examiner's position?
Well, the board didn't decide not to do the medical examiner position. The board actually has a contract with a vendor to provide medical examiner services in lieu of a coroner because Clayton County is one of, I believe, five counties within the state of Georgia that does not have a coroner, was abolished by law. And so this ordinance establishes the medical examiner position within our ordinance because eventually, the board may decide it doesn't want to continue to have a contract. You might decide you want to do it with a person in space. So this sets up the parameters for that position absent whether it carries out by contract or whether it's done with actually hiring somebody to carry out that job function.
So will this help in the delay? I understand sometime back when we were discussing this, is that correct, Chief?
They've already been in play. So they've already been operating in Clayton County, the medical examiner's office. Again, this is more administrative than adding something new.
Correct. This is provided-
So was that a contract with someone?
It's been a contract. Since the GBI said that they could not conduct those proceedings for us anymore, we had to go out and contract a medical examiner for ourselves.
I believe the Commissioner's question about a delay actually relates to the deceased persons in storage.
Right.
And there's another-
Well, that has a little bit to do with it.
Yes, ma'am. And the other resolution actually addresses that in reference to us having an ordinance that will, with your approval, allow us to begin cremation after a certain period of time where those remains are not claimed by next of kin, instead of us having these deceased persons accumulate currently in our mobile morgues.
How long do we wait to notify next of kin? And I'm asking because I saw something just this week in the news about a family that did not know that their deceased was already buried.
In Clayton County?
In Clayton County. No, no, that didn't happen in Clayton.
Okay.
No, no, it was somewhere else, but I'm-
Our contracted medical examiner moves out immediately identifying next of kin and they want to reduce the storage as much as possible. But we've gotten to capacity with our first mobile morgue. That's why this board approved the second purchase of a mobile morgue, which allowed us more space. But even with that, moving forward, we can't predict the amount of deceased persons that may accumulate with this additional ordinance that allows for cremation. It allows us to manage that in a timely manner. The ordinance that you will be reviewing or have likely reviewed puts a 15-day limit on unclaimed remains so that we don't have an accumulation of deceased persons.
But every effort is being made contacting next of kin.
Absolutely. Starts day one, when the medical examiner responds.
Okay. Is that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Hambrick.
Yeah.
You finished. Commissioner Franklin.
A question. Is that documented on how often you all contact and who you've contacted?
It's not us as the police department. And I don't see the Director of the Medical Examiner's Office here, so I can't speak to that. But he does keep records and notification because I've had interactions with him to that point. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then that would answer the question of if we run into a situation and we're trying to identify the next of kin, that we'll be able to prove that? Because you're speaking on it today, even though the person's not here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I can also add that, as the Chief alluded to, the ordinance that you all passed already, 2022-247, speaks that if they aren't able to reach the person, they put an ad in the paper for two consecutive weeks so that not only, you know, we try to reach them out, but also put it in the paper so that we can make every effort to make sure that the family is notified.
Which paper is that?
The, our legal organ, Clayton News Daily.
How many people get the? I'm just saying, I hope we have other ways too. Because, you know, a lot of people do not get or go online with Clayton News Daily. And they may not know that, you know, that that's the legal organ for-
Have to change our legal organ now.
I'm just hoping there are other ways of notifying.
Well, that's our fallback. Our primary method is to try to find out who is the next of kin and reach out to them within that 15-day period as a fallback. If we can't, then we publish in the legal organ. The legal organ is the county's legal organ. We can't do anything about people not reading the legal notices.
I'm just saying, we, as a county, need to have something else in place.
Yes, the primary way is for us to, Chief, you can come back, but the primary way is for us to try to reach out to them.
Right, it would be, right.
Of course, the attorney is speaking to the legal codification of the ordinance, but there are other steps that take place. Because the medical examiner is separate from the police department, they reach out to us during those times where they can't identify folks and we have tools such as a fingerprint identification readers. We can make Facebook notifications, things of that nature. So it's not just the ordinance, but for the purposes of the board approval, I believe that's what the ordinance requires. Am I not mistaken?
That's the fallback.
Right.
That's not all-inclusive.
Okay. Thank you.
And also I might note, I believe this year ACCG is supporting an expansion of that ordinance to have, to expand the legal organs for that. Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number 23, Resolution 2022-259.
Resolution 2022-259 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into Articles Agreement with MNA Law PC to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? So move. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Not pertaining to the company, to the organization, because I believe this is the group that helped us with the business grants that were passed out and I would like to say did a very, very good job. The problem I have is, how did we get to this point where we have to spend 6.5 million, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
In six weeks? We only have to the end of the year. What happened?
So, a couple of things. DCA or the federal government oftentimes do a reallocation. The reallocation is they provide funding to communities that they feel like can get the money out in a timely manner. The reallocation is not based upon an application process. They really try to figure out, you know, do you have the capacity to take on getting the funding out? I believe we got the notification initially of the reallocation in October, the 1st of October, I believe, was the timeline. And so from that period of time, based upon not wanting to continue to utilize our present third-party administrator, whether that was looking at African Children's Fund or in Hartz I or Hertz Hope or some others, we felt like it was important to try to figure out, how do we identify all the nonprofits to get the funding out in space? So we went through the process of trying to identify community-based organizations that could assist us with that. Of course, the board approved the actual nonprofits at our last board meeting. And then based upon additional conversations with Ms. Rocker with regards to a third-party administrator being MNA that did a great job and helped facilitating getting the money in the community, that caused additional delay. And so here today, we're in the process now of asking you to approve MNA as a third-party administrator to assist those three nonprofits that you've already approved to get the money out in the next six weeks.
Okay, so what are the consequences if we can't do that in the next, what, six weeks?
Funding that we hadn't spent by the 29th will be submitted back to the Treasury Department.
It sounds like the second time this year we've had to do that. Hopefully, we won't have to do it. And another point is, and I know we have someone in the audience tonight that as a landlord, has tenants that have applied for this money and have not received it. So it has put him in a bind, you know, of paying his bills and other things and his tax, county taxes, which is what he told me, that, you know, he can't afford to pay his taxes because some of his tenants have not received the money they apply for. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, you know, because we discussed that and how those funds, you know, were not issued out and all. I just hope that we get this money out. It's just something that does not sit right with me to send back dollars that could be used for our citizens.
Yes, ma'am, understood. Certainly, we'll be glad to get with the landlord as it pertains to his case specific. But in some instances, what happens is that there's a qualification that goes into space that the Treasury Department has put in space that we have to follow. So I don't know whether that is an issue with the qualification of the actual tenants, but we would love to talk to him about, you know, specifically what the issues are so we can certainly see about getting this money out sooner than later.
Well, he's here, so if someone can help him or assist him and have good customer service, let me say that. Because I understand he did talk with someone and that didn't turn so good. So we'll see how that works out.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the vote in now? No, sir. No, sir. All right, any other questions?
So we are going to get the money, we are going to get this money distributed to our citizens, our constituents?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
So, let me make sure I hear correctly. So we're going to hire MNA along with the nonprofits? So where before, we left that up to Africa Children's Fund, now we're going to bring in two entities to help get the job done? Is that what we're doing?
Just one entity. MNA will serve as the third-party administrator that will help directly with the three nonprofits that you've already approved. And the rationale behind it, Commissioner, is dealing specifically with, we realize that some of the nonprofits had some capacity issues as it pertains to having resources in place. After talking with Ms. Rocker and speaking with some others about the capacity of MNA, they certainly provided additional resources to help those respective nonprofits to be able to get the money in the community quicker, based upon the process they use with the small business.
And they did do a great job. So I do want to make sure I heard it clearly. Because before, there was just one administrator and then the county. And, but now, what we're doing is going through the nonprofit along with MNA to assist the nonprofit, so you're adding a second layer.
So it was two administrators and the ERA one distribution, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Smith, there was, African Children's Fund served as a conduit along with Hartz I or Hertz Hope as a process. But remember, African Children's Fund dealt more with the dispossessionary process in the courts opposed to dealing directly with the citizens that were not in the quote-unquote eviction process.
Say that. Say that again?
African Children's Fund? A lot of their work was assisting the courts, magistrate court, with those individuals that were in the dispossessionary process that were already had evictions in space opposed to individuals that were not receiving funding.
Yeah, but there was another organization too that assisted with this process outside of the court system. I forget the name of it. But again, we need to move forward. We know how we got here. I did not vote for Africa Children's Fund because I didn't think they had the capacity. And we need to do what- And, um, we need to do whatever we can to help our landlords and to help our tenants. Uh, because I will tell you once again, there's a huge gap in that space as, um, Madam Vice Chair even spoke to. And it's not even just the process. I hear what you're saying, but a lot of it is non-communication or non-professional communication. When I say non-professional, I'm talking about just, I, I don't, I'm trying to say it nicely. Hook wink. So I hope that we can, um, get to where we need to be at this point. But I'm glad to see that we're not just doing a sole, um, dispersment like we did previously because we do have twelve hundred nonprofits in our community. So there is a silver lining that some of our local nonprofits will have the opportunity to serve this community that they know well, as opposed to pulling somebody from outside the community.
Anything else?
Will this get started tomorrow morning?
Yes ma'am.
Any other questions?
I hope you all take great record.
Commissioner Hammer.
Yeah, someone that, uh, can get with my constituent, uh, the landlord is having problems.
Yes.
Because his tenants can't get the money.
I'll give him a card before we leave.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. Issue unanimous.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, maybe also because of such short amount of time, I would like to see a weekly report on the dispersments. As we move forward.
Madam Clerk.
Our next item is item number twenty-five, Board Appointment for the Library Board.
First Board Appointment is to the Library Board. Uh, Dr. Darrell Donerson McCullough has resigned from the Library Board. His appointment, he was appointed on March first, twenty-twenty-two. And this is to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Dexter Pointexter. Term will begin immediately and expire on February first, twenty-twenty-five. Commissioner Davis, you have a recommendation for us?
Yes, for Dr. Donelson, it's she. Ms. Don, you saw her. To the Library Board. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. Issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, our next items are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profan, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The Terrace Petri Plan and Zoning Administrator. The first item on agenda is BOC dash two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-nine-two. The applicant, Sam's Club, number eight-eight-two-eight-seven, is requesting a conditional use permit for an expansion to fuel pumps from twelve to twenty-four in the general business zoning district consisting of seventeen plus or minus acres of land. The subject property is located at seventy-three twenty-five Jonesboro Road, Moore, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six, which is further known as parcel twelve-zero-eight-zero-C. B's zero-zero-five, the subject property is located at the corner of Jonesboro Road and Battle Creek Road. This is the zoning map. Um, the future land use is general commercial. This is the survey. This is the site plan showing, uh, the expansion of the, the, uh, fuel pumps. This is the area showing the parking lot. Uh, this is the elevations of the, the fuel station. Staff's recommendation and law officer's recommendation is that in addition to the twelve fueling stations, Sam's Club shall install two electric vehicle chargers on the property at a safe location away from the fuel pumps. That shall be operational within a year of issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the fuel station addition. As per a letter from Georgia Power, it could take up to sixty weeks to secure a transformer depending on the type needed. And this is a new condition, um, and the only condition that staff is recommending at this specific moment.
All right, is the applicant present? Please come forward. And would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal?
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you. My name's David Kirk.
Would you like to reserve?
Yes sir.
How many?
Uh, as many as I have left after I'm done.
Well, you gotta give me a number first of all.
Uh, three.
Three, so set timer for seven. Please proceed.
I believe I have a presentation that's, that was sent in. If not, let's just, may I approach, Mr. Chairman? I've got a.
Thank you, Officer.
I sent a presentation to the portal this afternoon, but, uh, with your permission, I'll just proceed.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is David Kirk. I'm with the law firm of Troutman Pepper Hamilton Sanders, six hundred Peachtree Street, uh, in the city of Atlanta. Here representing Sam's Club. With me this evening is Mr. Eric Giuliano, who's the project engineer with Bowman Consulting. Uh, as staff indicated, uh, the proposed project is to expand from the existing twelve pumps, uh, fuel station at the Sam's Club to twenty-four pumps. Uh, that project includes the additional pumps, an extension of the fuel canopy more clearly marked, traffic lanes, uh, for better customer service, better traffic control. There'll also be a landscape island sort of demarcating that area. And as staff also noted, the project will include the installation of two electric vehicle stations. We believe the additional capacity will do a couple of things. One, it'll meet customer demand better. Uh, we think by doing that, it will improve, uh, traffic circulation, um, on the site, improve any congestion issues, uh, that, that may exist. Uh, the application's been thoroughly reviewed by staff, considered in light of, of your standards, determined to be suitable. And recommended for approval, uh, by them with that condition regarding the timing of the EV station. I will note that I've had additional conversations with Commissioner Davis and with staff this afternoon concerning, uh, continued concerns about, um, traffic on the site, traffic circulation. And we're certainly open to a dialogue with staff about how we might be able to work to improve that both during the construction period and, and permanently. With that, I would respectfully request, uh, your approval for, of the conditional use permit to allow the extension or expansion of the existing Sam's Fuel Station. Uh, be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you sir. At this time, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone would like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody oppose? Anybody oppose? Okay, you got three minutes, sir, if you'd like to utilize them. No? You're good?
I'm good.
Commissioner Davis.
Three questions however.
Yeah.
No need for rebuttal if no one's opposed, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kirk. I know we did talk about adding another condition. I don't know if you want to begin to handle that, which is to, um, begin to get a onsite, uh, traffic plan approved or onsite traffic plan approved before we begin construction on that. Mr. Jicky, you got something to add?
Uh, yes, I'm just want to, um, concur with the Commissioner that we had a discussion. They will submit an online, um, onsite traffic improvement during construction.
Parking, yes, for parking.
Parking, uh, for the parking circulation. That will be an additional condition.
Correct.
To the one that just been read.
And, and we're, we're agreeable to that, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis. Yes, I've moved that we approved, I forgot which one it is now. Uh, B's, B O C two-two-zero-three, I lost my glasses. Zero-one-nine-two with the condition stated and the condition also listed, uh, here in the agenda. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer.
Um, will the, um, operation remain in service? Will you all continue serving, uh, the customers or do you, will you be shutting down for a period of time?
I'm gonna have to defer to the engineer on, on that. My guess is we probably have to shut down during that period, but.
There you go.
Trying to move pumps.
It'd be just hard, it does be hard and potentially dangerous to have the construction going on while, while servicing.
Uh, Eric, Eric Giuliano, Bowman Consulting, forty-four fifty, uh, Westo Gally Boulevard, Melbourne, Florida. Um, what he said is correct. Obviously, uh, Sam's Club will want to shut down for the least amount of time possible because they do like the revenue. Um, but yeah, there will be a time where it won't be safe for, uh, you, construction and customers to be interacting together. Exactly how long that time is, I'm, I'm not sure, but it won't be long.
I do have one additional question. Commissioner Davis. Will this take, will this have to have an additional tank put in the ground or will they be operating off the same storage tank capacity that they do have currently have?
Um, right now I'm not, I'm not completely sure of that. I haven't seen a plan for an additional tank. Um, so I, I can't really answer that. I'd have to get back to you on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. Issue unanimous. Thank you sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next item on the agenda is at fifty-seven thirty-seven and fifty-seven higher, fifty-seven eighty-one, higher eighty-five, Riverdale, Georgia, three-zero-three-four-nine. The, we received a revised letter of intent, um, which is for a ninety-four unit condominium townhome style development. Um, that was clarification from the applicant, uh, that this would be a town, a condominium townhome style development. I believe we had the... Thank you.
I think we have the public hearing for that one and not the other one. I believe we had the public hea-, we already had the public hearing for this one, but not for the other one.
For the future land use map. Thank you.
Okay. All right, is the applicant present?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, board members. Uh, George Harper, Paramount Engineering, eleven East Broad Street, Newton, Georgia. I will, I guess, reserve five minutes.
Well, since we already had a hearing on it. So at this time, I just called you up to see if there was any additional comments that you might have prior to turning it over to Commissioner.
Yes sir. Uh, we did go back, uh, after meeting with staff, um, addressed some of the comments they had in regards to the building elevations, townhome elevations. Uh, also, we reduced the number of units. Originally, we came in with a hundred and six units, I believe it was. We reduced it down to ninety-four now, uh, with the addition of the two-car garages and we widened the units out a little bit. Uh, we did take in the recommendations, uh, of our last meeting, um, that the, uh, the adjacent property owner had wanting us to move the pavilion and the walking trail to the rear of the property away from his, his, uh, his house. We've done that. Uh, we've also moved the playground away from his house. That was a concern that he had. Moved it to the end of the cul-de-sac and added some parking down there. So I, I really think this is a much better plan than, than we had originally as well. Added in the fifteen additional spaces. Um, and then speaking with Ms. Hammer this, uh, this morning, uh, she had requested that we just, uh, add another condition of no parking signs, um, and do the, uh, the fence along the northern boundary, along the, uh, gentleman's property here as an eight-foot instead of a six-foot, uh, wood privacy fence, and we are in agreement with that. Now, I will say, I did speak to the, uh, to the homeowner, uh, before we, before the meeting today. Um, and he asked if we would, there, there apparently is, uh, on the, the northeast portion of his property, the northern boundary line, there's an old driveway through there and he said there is a power line through there. He asked if we wouldn't mind, uh, moving the, uh, privacy fence fifty feet off the property line almost to about midway of the, of the property and then, um, continue down ten feet in the property line and, and we agreed to that. That's, that's fine. We have no issues with that. So, um, I believe that's, that's all the changes that we had. Uh, Ms. Hammer, if there's anything else, I'd be glad to, to add those as well.
I know you addressed the two-car garage, but I'm concerned about the space that's left for a drive.
Madam Commissioner, this, this item that's before you now is just on the future land use map amendment. The next item that, uh, you all be considering is on the site plan and the actual rezoning. So those issues, you can talk to him about that.
Oh, okay. So all we need to do for the future land use is just vote, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Right, well, I, yes, I move that we accept. What is it? Um... Uh, BOC two-two-o-eight-zero-two-two-six for the, um, future land use map. Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose. Issue unanimous.
The next item on the agenda, um, item number twenty-eight is BOC dash two-two-zero-six-dash-zero-two-one-five. A request by Paramount Engineering LLC to rezone fifty-seven thirty-seven and fifty-seven eighty-one, higher eighty-five, Riverdale, Georgia, three-zero-three-four-nine from heavy industrial to RM, um, multiple family residential for a ninety-four unit condominium townhome style development. Set property consisting of thirteen plus or minus acres is located in the Cherry Hills Overlay District between Rock Hill Drive and Goddard Rock Boulevard and is further known as parcels thirteen-one-zero-seven-A-A-zero-zero-two and thirteen-one-zero-seven-A-A-zero-zero-three. And the elevations do, does, um, comply with the zoning ordinance, uh, both the overlay district as well as the architectural standards. Staff, uh, staff recommendation was, uh, with conditions approval. Um, Zach recommendation was approval of conditions as well. The mo-, the updated conditions, um, include the development shall be in substantial conformity to the site plan submitted by the applicant dated eleven-ten-twenty-two. The development shall have a maximum of ninety-four units, all of which shall have two-car garages. The townhome elevation shall be in substantial conformity to those provided by the applicant dated eleven-nine-twenty-two. And the pavilion elevation shall be in substantial conformity to those provided by the applicant dated eleven-eight-twenty-two. Um, fourth, uh, condition is provided as traffic steady. Uh, fifth condition is add in, in additional fifteen, uh, provide fifteen guest parking spaces throughout the development. Provide one trash service for the entire development. Install a chain link fence around the playground area. Offset from the northern property line, install a privacy fence with a minimum height of six feet along the entire northern property line. And just for clarity, the zoning ordinance restricts the height of the fence. And just for clarity, the zoning ordinance restricts the height of the fence to six feet unless this is an industrial zone. And the last condition is install no-on-street parking signs.
All right, is applicant present? Like to reserve any minutes for...
Yes, sir, five minutes, please. Thank you. Not to go back through everything again, but we are in agreement with all of the conditions placed on it. I guess, per the ordinance, it needs to be six feet instead of eight feet. We were willing to do the six, the eight-foot privacy fences you'd requested, but Mr. Petrie said that the ordinance allows it to only be six feet. So, no-on-street parking signs. And I did want to kind of jump ahead because I knew what you were about to ask me on the last meeting. So with a 20-foot setback measured from the right-of-way on these properties, that, so there's approximately 11 feet normally from the back of curb to the right-of-way line. So that's 31 feet from the back of curb that you would have to the front of the unit, okay? And so if you have a two-foot grass strip, a five-foot sidewalk, that means the back of the sidewalk would be seven feet from the back of curb, which, all that math together adds up to you have 24 feet from the back of the sidewalk to the unit, okay? So a typical car is 18 to 20 feet. So the cars would not be, there is enough room for a car to be parked in the driveway and not block the sidewalk. Yes, ma'am, I knew where you were going with that, so I'll go ahead and ask that for you. But, you know, again, we met with the staff, went through all of the elevations and met all the new requirements, and again, met with the property owner as well, and I believe he's happy after speaking with him tonight. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, I want to hear a little bit more about the restriction on the length, I mean, the height of the fence, especially on the side, on the privacy fence side.
Commissioner, and that's a code issue. The fence height in a residential area can only go up to six feet. The fence height in a commercial area can be eight.
Don't we have a commercial building on the other side of the resident?
Yeah, but it's, the fence will be between this residential and, and, and Mr. Edwards. And if you recall the last, the last meeting, when Mr. Edward raised a question about why he's industrial, his property was zoned industrial. And we spoke to him, and the plan is to change heat zoning to residential zoning.
But right now, it's...
Right now, it is, but the plan, we actually have him on one of our calendars to rezone him to residential.
Maybe I can lend something here. The current, the ordinance is the ordinance, but it's the current zoning that you can base whatever you're going to do upon. If I'm not mistaken, that's number one. Number two, the board can vote to make it happen. We can't vote on something because it's on a calendar. If it's commercial, it's commercial right now. The fence can be eight feet, end of that. Just vote. Because you were speaking on what it will be once you change his zoning.
Yes.
But right now, alone with what Commissioner is saying, because we're doing this now.
Yeah, with that logic, I'm thinking, yes, you can do that.
Okay.
But if that's the case, but our, our, before they even start their construction, we're going to rezone his property.
But right now, while we're voting, it's...
Yes, I mean, yes.
Okay, so you're right, I would like to see the eight, eight-foot fence for the privacy fence being eight feet.
Yes, it is privacy fence.
Is that an agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, and we did say the no parking signs on the street, right?
Yeah.
Okay, mailboxes. Will the project, the, what is it, condo townhomes, will they, will there be mailboxes?
Yes, ma'am, if you see the little pull-off as you come in the neighborhood, those three little dark squares here, these what you call a CDU, a community mailbox unit, so it's the pedestals that have multiple mailboxes on them. The mail service doesn't like to go house-to-house anymore. They try to do it all at one time. So, yes, this will have the community mailbox as you come in right there, and it has the little pull-off for all the mailboxes.
Okay, and did we read all the conditions? Were all the conditions read?
Yes, ma'am, they were.
Well, well, but we need a correction.
Commissioner, when the project started, they came in at a townhome product in clarifying their project and the way they're doing it. Then until it's a condo, one of the conditions we're going to add is that before they start building, they must have a condo association. When you're doing condo, there is a condo declaration plat that gets involved. So in that process, the community must have a condo association. The reason is that the only thing folks own in a condo is the four walls of where they live. Everything outside, it's a common space, and that common space will belong to the condo association. So one of the conditions we want to add is that they must have a condo association.
You are, I think you have to say it on record or something, that you are in agreement.
Yes, ma'am, yes, that, 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 excuse me, that definitely is part of what we would have to do, so absolutely. We're in agreement with that.
And you're clear on the eight-foot fence?
Yes, we proffered that, actually, but...
And that's going to be amended or changed on the, on the document that you have there, right?
Right, because it was read into record.
As six.
Right.
You change it date, right?
Yes, sir. So the revised condition is... So revised condition number eight is offset from the northern proper line, install a privacy fence with a height of eight feet along, if a height of eight feet. The first 450 feet of the fence from Highway 85 shall be offset 50 feet from the proper line. The, and I'm... The remaining portion of the fence shall be a minimum of 10 feet from the proper line.
And then go ahead and read, and number two.
Well, hold on. You're reading from Highway 85. That's part of where the privacy fence will be, because his house is...
So the, the first 450 feet of the fence from Highway 85 shall be offset 50 feet from the proper line, and so, meaning...
Okay, through here. So from here to here, where the gentleman's house is, we're going to offset the fence 50 feet from the property line as he requested. And then once we get past his fence, we'll come back up to 10 feet from the property line, which will encompass our community area.
Okay, and that first area will be the privacy?
It'll all be the privacy, yes, ma'am. The whole length will be privacy.
Eight feet.
We're just going to, yes, ma'am, offset it 50 feet to give him the additional room, and there's some utilities to that.
Condition number 10 is, before they start building, must have a condominium association.
But does that condominium association have to be registered with the county, or is it only with the state?
From the state.
I think that we should, Madam Vice Chair, if you don't mind, only because of what I'm dealing with in District 3, what happens is if you have any issues with that community, when they go to cite that community, it's difficult to cite them unless they're registered or have some contact information here in the county. So it's just one thing to consider, is when you have a mailbox area, it will, if it gets trashy, somebody's got to be held responsible to come clean it up, and I just know it would be easier and cleaner. You can add that, that they must register along with, to keep that information up to date with the county as well. It'll lessen your amount of runaround for code enforcement. Just a suggestion. Well, I like the suggestion.
And I like it too. The, the only thing is that we don't have, I don't think we have any instrument for registration of condos. Since I've been here, this is the only condo that I know that have come true in what we're doing. So I'm going to be checking with the county attorney to see how we...
Can we get it started?
Yes, we can get it started, but by the time they finish, to make sure it's recorded properly, because keeping track, it's also recording that organization in the court, so that it's duly recorded stuff that we can track. So we're going to work out how we track it, so that we don't say it here, and six months from now, when they start building, it cannot be tracked.
It can be tracked. So, Madam Vice Chair, if I can make the second recommendation, is that you just put it on there and staff can figure out how to do it. It could be as simple as making sure that they register with the police department, just like all the other HOAs give the information to them. It doesn't have to be as difficult. I thought it would may be registered with community development. It would be nice to.
We will not, we don't have the capacity to track things like that, because that will be on the code enforcement side.
We only have one, we only have one.
If, if the pleasure of the board, we, community development don't want to really get into code enforcement, and...
But you already are.
You already, I was going to say.
You have to go back and make sure that these conditions are met in every area.
What about our commercial code enforcement?
That's what they do.
We have a presentation for you coming in a work session to explain, no, to explain the difference between quality compliance and code enforcement.
Well, please, and I welcome that, I welcome that.
So we can just move this forward? Is there a problem, Mr. Reed? Hold on a second, is there a problem, Mr. Reed, just to have that added in there, that it will be registered through code enforcement?
Well, just say just register with the county.
Register through the county, and then we'll leave it up to us to where it needs to go.
I think it's just keep it just the county, and just leave it at that, and how it's done can be...
So please have that added as another condition.
One other thing, too, is that the code, your code provides that, but this request is rezoning from commercial to residential. So you can apply industrial standards after you vote on this. So you're saying, let's keep the industrial standards by having an eight-foot fence?
Right.
But once you approve this, it will no longer be industrial, it will be residential?
Right.
Which means you've got to apply by, abide by your code as it relates to residential fence height, which is six feet. The, you have, the board has not given itself the ability to create what's called a variance from its code that it's set. So the only way that they would have to, and really, I don't even know if it would even be appropriate for them to ask for to feed additional standard under the variance, but that's something they can decide on whether they want to do. But you all are bound by your code, which is, once it's resolved, once you, assuming you all agree for their request to move from HI to RM, which will move from industrial to residential, they're bound by residential standards, which means it has to be a six-foot height as their, as their maximum height, not an eight-foot.
But we would have already voted.
No, I'm saying, when you vote, when you vote on this, it will be a residential property, which means that you have to apply the residential standards to that property, not industrial standards.
So are you good with the eight or the six? I mean, otherwise, we just won't be able to do it, right?
Well, no, it's just, it's just that if there's a fence around there, it has to be six feet.
If this is going to be approved today, it has to be a six-foot.
Correct. Correct, because unless you decide at some later point to make eight feet as a residential standard, but even still, even if you did that, it wouldn't necessarily apply to this property, because they're, you've already approved.
Okay, well, if the law states or the ordinance, and that's what's in place, then we'll have to go with the six.
So change it back to six.
So you can't have a conditional use, is what you're saying, conditional permit?
Really would be what's called a variance, like, and you all haven't given yourselves the authority to vary your standards in very, very, very limited circumstances. It's only dealing with cell towers.
Got it, thank you.
So revised condition eight is, offset from the northern proper line, install a privacy fence with a height of six feet. The first 450 foot, 50 feet of the fence from Highway 85 shall be offset 50 feet from the proper line. The remaining fence shall be offset 10 feet from the proper line. New condition number 10 is, before they start building, must have a condominium association and must register the contact information with the county.
That's it. All right, so at this time, it's a public hearing. Does anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a little something to say about this.
Come forward, please.
Madam Clerk, Nikki Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Listen, there's something that y'all haven't mentioned in this that we're having a situation with in Clayton County, is that the developer have no rental units in the, on the property. That's my concern about that. We need to have home ownership skinning the game, so to speak. And y'all should make that one of the conditions of, of, of the zoning. Thank you.
Mr. Garber, we already had that changed some time ago and changed our code for that. So it's already written in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Hammer.
Yes, I move that we approve BOC 2206 dash 0215, rezone HI to RM for, is that 94? I think it's 94.
That is correct, ma'am, 94 units.
94 units.
All right, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Franklin, are there any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is BOC 2208-0221, rezone 2426 Lake Harbor Road from ROI to RS 110.
And before, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is in District, Commission District 1.
Is the applicant here? Please come forward. Give us your name, please.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. My name is Jayla Mullin, and I am here on behalf of Oak Tree Real Estate to request the rezoning of 2426 Lake Harbor Road here in Moro, Georgia, zip code 30260.
Now, before you get started...
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson has, she's not here due to a definite family, and this is within her district. And for her to be part of this, I'm asked if you have, would have an issue of holding these two items until, is it both companion cases?
They're separate cases.
They are. Holding it until the next zoning meeting, so she can be present to give her concerns.
Okay.
So in other words, would you be opposed to holding this, give me a date?
December 20th.
December 20th? Till December 20th, so she can be present?
Um, it's probably a better question for the CEO of Oak Tree Real Estate. Um, it's probably a better question for the CEO of Oak Tree Real Estate, but it seems, do we have another choice? Like, does it seem like we have another option?
Well, I guess you can always request to go forward with the, with the hearing.
I believe you all have adopted a parliamentary rule that, that the district commissioner has to be the one who makes the recommendation correct.
Okay, so yeah, December twentieth it'll have to be.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
The next item on the agenda is item, agenda item number thirty, BOC dash two-two-zero-eight dash two, sorry, BOC dash two-two-zero-eight dash zero-two-two-three, a conditional use permit to operate a car Ross in Commission District One.
Same applies.
Yeah, it's the same though. We're holding that till December twentieth, that zoning hearing. She said she was good with both.
It's separate application, applicants.
Oh, okay. Is there another applicant? Is the applicant here for this request? Okay, we'll hold it over till December twentieth regardless. Proceed with the next, please.
Good evening, Chairman Turner, Commission members. I'm Angela Rambo, Planning Director for the collaborative firm, serving tonight as your Planning Consultant. Our next case, BLC two-two-zero-eight zero-two-three-one. This is a request to amend the future land use category map from general commercial to light industrial for six-seven-nine-five Green Industrial Way in Morrell, Georgia, for proposed commerce center warehouse use. Said property consisting of approximately eight-point-seven acres is located on Green Industrial Way, south of Mount Zion Boulevard, and is further known as parcel one-two-one-one-twoC A zero-zero-five. Showing the future land use map, which is currently GC, your zoning map, aerial, and proposed site plan. And that is a proposed elevation of the warehouse. The zoning advisory group has recommended approval of this proposal. Staff has recommended approval as well.
All right, is applicant present?
Good evening, my name is Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine, Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I'm here before you tonight on behalf of Cameron Property Group, which is the applicant in this case and the proponent of a warehouse distribution center on this property. We do have recommendations of approval from the planning staff and also from the zoning advisory group. Since this is the future land use map amendment application, I will hold my commentary on the specifics of the development until we get to the next agenda item.
Anybody here would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody in opposition? You have anything else to add before I turn it over to Commissioner?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I ask that we approve BOC two-two-zero-eight dash zero-three-one.
Is there a second? I'll suck in the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Read that number again.
Two-two-zero-eight zero-two-three-one, number thirty-one.
Okay, I thought you said-
Those in favor, aye.
Okay, our next case is the companion case to that's future land use map amendment, BLC two-two-zero-eight zero-two-three-zero. This is a request by Wilson Brock Irby LLC. BLC two-two-zero-eight zero-two-two-seven. This is a request to rezone from GB to LI for Commerce Center Warehouse. Again, the property consists of approximately eight-point-seven acres, is located on Green Industrial Way, south of Mount Zion Road, and is further known as parcel one-two-two-one-twoC See your aerial again. Once again, the staff has recommended approval and the zoning advisory group has recommended approval of the petition as well.
Mr. Buckley, would you like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, may I reserve two? And my name is Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine, Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta, here on behalf of Cameron Property Group. If I might ask the planning staff to push the slides back to the aerial, if they might. There are several reasons to approve this rezoning application and the companion, companion use permit application, even though, as we all know, warehouse distribution is not everyone's favorite land use. Number one, the planning staff has recommended approval of the application because they have confirmed that we meet all of the standards in the code for that action. The zoning advisory board, I'm sorry, zoning advisory group reviewed that recommendation and also took a wider policy look at this and also recommended approval of the application. In addition to those favorable recommendations, the site that you see in the, in the aerial is the former Regal Cinema location, right by South Lake Mall. It has been vacant for about twenty years or so. I do remember when the theater was there in high school, I did take someone there for a date, so that's one of my, my touch points with this site. But the good thing about this site is that it is surrounded by industrial use. This is not a situation where you have industrial that is trying to find a home near established residential areas. So it is completely consistent with the character of the surrounding development to remove this vacant theater and replace it with an industrial warehouse use. In addition, excuse me, this is a very low intensity use, even though it is industrial. Typically, when you see an industrial warehouse proposal, you're talking about a half a million to a million square feet under one roof. If you're talking about a small warehouse, you're talking about a quarter million to three-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand square feet. We are proposing one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand square feet for this facility. And to give you some context on that, that is smaller than your typical grocery store. The average Kroger store has a floor area of about a hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand square feet. So this is less intense from a built environment perspective. It is also less intense from a development impact perspective. If this site were to be improved with the average-sized Kroger store, you would have over fifteen-hundred trips to and from this site every day, and that's with large trucks making inventory deliveries as well as private vehicles. But, and that is fifteen-hundred trips in the peak afternoon hour, so that's just peak rush hour traffic. In that same timeframe, this development would generate eighty-eight trips total. And over the course of the entire day, we're talking about thirty trucks. So that is a fraction of the truck traffic and the overall traffic that you would associate with a facility like this one. In addition, when you talk about warehouse industrial uses, you're usually thinking of big rig trucks. That is not what we're going to be looking at here. We are looking at smaller vehicles that make last-mile deliveries within Clayton County. So that is another key distinction. Typically, these facilities move products through Clayton County. This facility is gonna be used to move products to Clayton County. So there is a direct benefit to having this facility in, in this area. The smaller trucks would be delivery vans, you would have pup trucks, and you would have box trucks. Think of the vehicles that you normally see make deliveries to convenience stores. I mean, these are smaller trucks that we're talking about and over, only thirty of them over the course of a full day. Additionally, this property is at the cul-de-sac end of Green Industrial Way, and it is behind a row of other businesses along Mount Zion Road. And so as a consequence, you're already going to have reduced visibility. People who are passing by on Mount Zion will not see this because of the distance between the property and that road and also the intervening development. In addition to that screening, we have submitted a very detailed landscape plan that includes additional screening landscape materials. So again, this is not only consistent with the use of the area, not only is it a lower intensity than what you normally would see, but on top of that, we're going to have landscape improvements that's both decorative and screening in nature. And I suspect that that low visibility had something to do with the fact that the theater didn't survive because businesses like that do depend on high passerby visibility. The next factor in our favor is that this is eliminating blight. Many times I talk about preventing blight by doing something on a piece of property. This is a property that's already vacant, it's already got whatever's going on it, on, on the site because it is so shielded from public view. This would eliminate that condition on this piece of property. And then finally, as, in a situation that is very unusual for warehouse distribution, we do not have, or have not so far, unless someone surprises me today, we don't have any opposition. There was no opposition at the CZIM, there was no opposition at the zoning advisory group, and I am unaware of any opposition that's been voiced directly to the planning staff. So for all of those reasons, we ask that you approve our application and I will stand down and, and let better voices speak than mine.
All right, is there anyone here would like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in favor of applicant's requests? Anybody opposed? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Got two minutes, sir.
The only other brief points I would like to make, or with regard to the landscaping plan, we will be hiring a commercial landscape company to maintain the landscaping on this property. The grass will be mowed on an every-other-week basis. And the decorative flower beds, the seasonal flower beds, will be maintained and refreshed, they will be constantly maintained, but they will be refreshed on a semi-annual basis. So twice a year, they will be totally removed and refreshed. And finally, the number of jobs that will be created here is in the range of twenty to one-hundred jobs, and the anticipated wage range is between fifty thousand dollars and one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars per year.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Great. You answered everything, so the pedestrian, the landscape plan, and you can reiterate that this is not a warehouse that will ascertain eighteen-wheeler, eighteen, the large eighteen-wheeler trucks.
That is correct.
Great, great, great. I recommend that BOC two-two-zero-eight zero-two-two-seven be approved as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, what's scanned? We have a request from Wilson Brock and Irby LLC for, this time for a conditional use permit for six-seven-nine-five Green Industrial Way in Morrell, Georgia, to operate a proposed commerce center warehouse use. Said property, approximately eight-point-seven acres, is located on Green Industrial Way, south of Mount Zion Boulevard, and is further known as parcel one-two-one-one-twoC A zero-zero-five. Again, this is specifically for the conditional use permit.
Any minutes for rebuttal?
Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine, Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I ask that you approve this application based on my prior remarks that I made for BOC twenty-two-zero-eight zero-two-two-seven.
Anybody like to speak in favor of?
Mr. Chairman?
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Board of Commissioners, from everything the gentleman has expressed, he is proposing an asset for Clayton County. The only thing that I haven't heard the gentleman remark about was that the trash was, and litter would be picked up daily, and I wish he would address that. And for that reason, I welcome him as a neighbor. Just let me hear it. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition? Anybody like to speak?
There is some excitement.
In opposition to? Commissioner Davis?
Mr. Buckley, would you like to address this trash comment, please?
Yes, sir, not only will the trash be collected from the site daily, but we will be installing decorative screening that will prevent view from, of our dumpster from the public right of way. Thank you.
First, I want to just say, Mr. Buckley, thank you because this was a process that they reached out to me early in the process and answered all the questions along the way. I appreciate your professionalism and how you handled this project.
Thank you so much.
I move that we approve BOC two-two-zero-eight zero-two-three-zero as read.
Is there a second? I'll suck in the motion, are there any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Okay, the next case is BLC two-two-zero-nine zero-two-three-three. This is a request by Freedom Christians Center for a conditional use permit for the expansion of a place of worship at six-nine-one-two and six-nine-two-four Commercial Drive in Morrell, Georgia, which is in the HI Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Said property consisting of approximately one-point-zero-six acres is located at the corner of Commercial Drive and Barton Road, and is further known as parcels one-two-zero-eight-twoA C zero-zero-one and one-two-zero-eight-twoA C zero-zero-two. You'll see the zoning map, the HI zoning, future land use map. It's our aerial. That is the parcel that the expansion will be used for. And this is a proposed site plan showing the existing church building on the bottom and the expansion, expansion building on top. That is a proposed rendering of the building. The building will be used as a gem community center, and this is a proposed interior rendering. The building will be used as a gym community center and this is a proposed interior rendering. Staff recommends approval with conditions. The zoning advisory group recommended approval with conditions as well and the conditions are as follows. Number one, combine the parcel with the existing place of worship with the parcel, with the proposed gym. And number two, seek approval of variance of, for Article Six, Section three point two for reduction in parking.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and if you would like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal.
Yes, sir. My name is Pastor Darius Shannon and I would like to reserve three minutes.
Thanks, sir.
First, give God all honor and praise. Thank you so much. Chairman, Vice Chair, everybody who's here in their respective places. My grandson Eric told me last time we came in here, he said, Papa, why you didn't say you was a doctor? And, you know, I'm humble. So, Pastor Darius Shannon, I hold a master's degree in ministry and an honorary doctorate in ministry. The basketball is the story tonight. I grew up in Clayton County and the basketball kept me out of a lot of trouble. I remember going to parties being about fifteen or sixteen and I would step in the door and they would, you know, back in that time, they would try to put the marijuana in your face or the alcohol in your face. I had friends that would say, no, he's going to the NBA. So, the basketball kept me out of a lot of trouble. So, what we are wanting to do is change our land use from HI to LI where it states that we can have an indoor gymnasium facility. And we want to use it as a accessory building. And as the young lady stated, we have received approvals in the first two meetings. What I've been doing for the last fifteen years in Clayton County is helping the community, helping our church and helping the community. And what, one of the best ways we do it is by mentoring to our youth. So, our gym basically is what I like to call bait to bring in our youth and young adults and try to assist them and make their lives better and become an asset, more of an asset to Clayton County. Another game just won't be basketball. I'm glad you got that time, man. You know how preachers are, thank you. Another game is pickleball. My wife introduced me to this game about a year ago. Didn't know anything about it because I really, I've stopped playing basketball because, you know, I got these little knee issues, so I'm just a coach now. But pickleball is an exciting game. And as you can see, we're planning on having a pickleball court on the basketball court. And pickleball draws seniors. It draws forty, fifty, sixty. I played a man eighty years old. You can't judge a book by its cover. He beat my butt. So, I'm gonna stop right there because you know how preachers are. But any questions that you all have on a report?
All right, it's a public hearings. Anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Please come forward.
How y'all doing? My name is Jamarcus McGuire. I'm twenty-one years old from Freedom Christians Center. I'm a deacon there. But like he said, like, it's, it's, I feel like it'll be good for the youth because, you know, we the future. And it's like, he had mentored me since I was young and it keep, I feel like it'd keep a lot of people out in the streets like my age, you know? And like, people that play basketball and stuff like that, instead of like, you know what I'm saying, being in the streets and stuff, they can come and like, be mentored and stuff like that and bring all of us closer to God because a lot of people my age is not close to God. So, I feel like it'd be a good place to be for, have a gym.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Deborah McGuire and I'm also a member of Freedom Christians Center. I'm a mother there. And I would like to say that we feel that this will be a benefit to the community because we always reach out, we have a food bank to serve the community and our mission is to help the community and to look out for the youth for today. And I feel like during times when they wandering around and have nowhere to go, maybe this is something that they would consider as a safe haven. We will also have security, so, you know, maybe somewhere at night you don't have anywhere to go, you can go there. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Anybody else? Anybody want to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Sir, you have two minutes if you have closing remarks before we turn it over to Commissioner.
This is where I bring it on home. Now, just, well, two minutes. We're just excited. Me and my engineer, you know, we're working, we're architect, we're working. And we want to, if you go look at our church now, I don't know if any of you, Commissioner Davis, if you had opportunity to ride by, but, you know, we make sure our lot stays maintained, our grass is maintained, you know, we keep the place looking beautiful. I'm a lover of Craig Myrtle trees and you see we'll have two there breaking off the parking. But we just want to be, we just want to reach the community and we just want to continue to do what we've been doing for the last fifteen years better.
Awesome. Thanks, sir. Commissioner Davis.
Thank you very much for that, sir. I move that we approve BOC two-two zero nine zero two three three with the conditions, we haven't read those conditions yet, Apple. We did read them? Okay. With the conditions as stated.
And your agreeance with the conditions?
Yes, sir, I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hamburg. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Before we go to public comment, Mr. Chair, could I have a point of privilege that's very important for our board?
Commissioner Franklin?
All right. For those who remember, there was a presentation by our Boys and Girls Club and for those who remember that particular club, which is Flint River Community Center, it serves not only the entire county at the time, but particularly those that are within districts, I would say, two, three, and four. And you remember, there was a young man that really impressed all of us. His name was Elias Dennis. And Elias Dennis was going to be competing for Youth of the Year for all of Metro Atlanta. I just want Clayton County to know that our Boys and Girls Club has only been in existence for a little over a year and our very own Mr. President, Mr. Future Doctor Veterinarian, Elias Dennis, won as Youth of the Year. So, if we can celebrate him. This just happened Friday evening, so they will be back and we'll have them come to give them a huge celebration. But I think Clayton County should be proud as the young man said, that you all are our future and we're proud of our future. Thank you for the work that you're doing, Pastor. And I thank Elias's mom as well as the entire board of Flint River Community Center Boys and Girls Club, as well as Ms. Amelia and Mr. Michael. They've really been pouring into an area that needed it the most off of Flint River Road. So, we're excited.
Next, Madam Clerk.
All right. Madam Vice Chair, before the public comment section, I would like to ask for two separate motions to table items number twenty-nine and thirty for the December twentieth regular business meeting.
You can do both, a combined motion.
Even though there's separate properties?
I mean, yes.
Okay. So, I want to amend that to include one vote for both.
You know what? You're correct. It should be two separate ones, yes.
I would like to amend that amendment. I would need two separate votes for item twenty-nine and item thirty.
So, are we just moving them off of the agenda or we have to move them off the agenda until?
Table them, table them until?
Until December twentieth.
Correct.
Okay. Make the motion. Make the motion to move BOC two-two zero eight zero two-two one. Table that motion until December twentieth.
Okay, I have a second?
Second. Okay, it's been moved and second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Again, table item BOC two-two zero eight zero two-two three until December twentieth.
Second? It's been moved and properly second that we accept this recommendation. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Our next section is the public comment section. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners with a total time of twenty minutes. Please note that all public comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Shakir Mohammed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a community concern.
Sir, would you? Your name, please?
My name is Shakir Mohammed.
And your residence?
My residence is ten eighty-nine Ponry Drive, Rivertale, Georgia, three oh two nine six. Now, I have, I have community concern about the building of a, like a small hotel next to me. Taking a house and thirteen rooms into the house with a lock on each door. And we don't want that in our community. Because we have children, we have families in the community and the school bus pick up the children right up the street from me and the children come by, they have little small kids. We don't need that kind of house, that kind of structure in our community because it looks like a little small hotel.
Where is this, sir?
On Highway eighty-five in Rivertale, Georgia. Right off of Helmer. Right off of Highway eighty-five in Helmer.
Oh, okay.
Helmer Road.
That's in district, if it's off of Helmer Road, that's district three. And I don't know anything about somebody building that, so we need to look into that.
Yeah, I did call your office.
Yeah. Okay.
I just didn't get no return. I left a message.
Okay. Kayla actually is our constituent aide, so just go ahead and what I would like for you to do is just make sure, hey, we get your information so I can look into that because I don't?
Code enforcement came out and put a notice on there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. It hasn't come before our board for approval.
Okay. Commissioner Franklin, thank you. You can get the information, but, you know, those lines were changed. So, Helmer is now in district two.
Well, see, then, you need to call that office.
Thank you.
I forgot. Helmer's no longer me.
Attorney Reed, I know this has been a growing concern going throughout, not just Clayton County, but out through multiple counties in the state where folks are turning, it's more or less kind of expanding the Airbnb philosophy where they are taking these rooms and locking, putting a lock and separate key on each door and renting them out. So, I think that's something that we might want to begin to address through some type of audits.
The room, the room size is only big enough for a bunk, not even a twin bed.
The, this board has already addressed that. But it, it's going to require citizens like Mr. Mohammed and others who know of it coming up to alert our code enforcement and alert community development so that we can go out there and address it because it is already, it's not allowed under our code to do that stuff.
Yes, so will you call my office, sir?
Yeah.
Yes.
Tell them code enforcement already went out, too.
Oh, you say code has already gone out?
They've already addressed it.
Yeah, yeah, it came out yesterday, whatever.
It's in process.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Reverend Hatway, I believe, has left. Pat Bryant.
Good afternoon to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners. To piggyback on what Mr. Mohammed just said, we have deep concerns about this type of behavior coming into our neighborhood. Commissioner Hamburg, you take a three-bedroom, transform it into a thirteen-bedroom. Code enforcement responded quickly. I placed a call at eight thirty, at eleven-thirty. They was out there, the orange note was on the door by four o'clock. So, as we investigate, it's a pad split hedge fund investor, just like you warned us, Commissioner Franklin. They purchased the property. So, as you read the horrible stories, DeKalb County, just like you said, Commissioner Davis, Metro Counties is having to address these problems and it's no security on site. How do you put thirteen of us in one building with no security? So, we are just concerned and deeply just upset. It's this, these are all my neighbors back here on the left. So, that's why we came out in the rain and the weather because we need help. We're requesting a zone hearing so that we can put a halt to this hedge fund coming into our subdivision. Please help us, Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Looked like, um, Commissioner, Madam Vice Chair stole you from me, Ms. Pat. But that's okay.
Who stole you?
She stole you from me.
You're now in district two.
Oh, no!
Hey, hey, you still come to our meetings and call me.
Okay, 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 but. I'm sorry I didn't introduce myself. We just so upset. We just need some help. Please educate us, please direct us and guide us on what we need to do to stop this hedge fund from bringing this to our neighborhood, Commissioner Hamburg.
Let me just spell it. R A M A K R I S H R A N. Is the first name.
No, my name is Pat Bryant.
No, no, no.
The address of the property?
The next person.
It's the next property.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the first name is spelled R A M A K R I S H R A N. Okay. It's an Atlanta address, so that may have been someone there. Okay, Orlando Gooden.
Madam Clerk, Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. I've spoken about this several times before and I'm going to speak about it again. Public comments after the hidden agenda is an insult to the people of this county. You're going to pass whatever you want to pass and then tell us we can get up here and complain about it. We should be heard before you do this. There are items on the agenda that are questionable. I don't, well, thank you for bringing up item number twenty-four, but the item that interests me is item number eleven from the Sheriff's Department. Locks and hinges. Now, I live a mile and a half, two miles from the jail. I would think locks and hinges are important to a jail. They did three presentations here and never brought it up. Now, it's November and locks and hinges are important. What is the dollar amount? Did anybody see a dollar amount on there? I didn't see one. Item number twenty-four, thank you for bringing it up. I don't understand why we're adding another layer for grants when I keep hearing stories about, well, we got duplication of effort, redundancy, it is just unnecessary. when I keep hearing stories about, well, we got duplication of effort, redundancy, it is just unnecessary. Well, we have Office of Performance Management. Had you put past ECVIS, we wouldn't be hiring another department group to do this, and there's no dollar amount. So I want to thank you for bringing it up, to take it off. Let's discuss this, find the purpose of it. What's the advantages, and how is it going to work with the Office of Performance Management? Instead of reducing their capabilities, we should be enhancing them. Thank you.
Miki Garber?
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. What I would like to recognize is the people that work at the polling places for us to vote and everybody that works in voter registration in Clayton County. They can tell Mr. Rathensberger that I only voted once. But I want the people to know that work those polls to give me an opportunity to express my views and vote. A heartfelt, grateful thank you.
Oh, I think Jeffrey Edwards. Jeffrey Edwards. Okay, and this last, not last, but the next person. The address is Pond Ridge Drive, Rivadale. Eleven oh five. Okay, next person is Mr. Brewer. Okay, well, that's it for public comment. Do we have executive session?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, on. Real estate personnel and litigation.
Okay. Will we will have a motion to go into executive session?
So move. Madam Vice Chair, can I state one thing? I want to give a congratulations to Ms. Tori for her presentation up in Washington, DC this past week, or last week. She did one heck of a job on showing folks from around the country our senior services, our award-winning senior services. So thank you, and you did a great job.
Good job. Great job, Director. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? And a second? Okay. And, uh. Motion, second question?
No question.
All right. We go into executive session. I second it. Okay. They're moving the second one. Yes, yes.
Y'all have a vote, all right?
Huh? We're back in session.
Okay. First is.
Is that number thirteen?
This is number thirteen, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thirteen is approval of a plan for the Behavior Health Crisis Center. And actually, there'll be a slight amendment to that to actually act the county to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between Clayton County, Georgia, and the Development Authority of Clayton County to authorize the transfer of property located, tax parcel number thirteen one four zero B C zero four four, for approximately five acres, with property owned, well, property located of tax parcel number thirteen one four zero B C zero four two and a tax parcel number one three one four zero B zero four two. Both of those approximately five acres apiece. And authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to reform any acts as necessary under the terms of the agreement, and also authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary to reflect the, as any, to reflect the terms of the agreement or any things that's required by this agreement as well.
So move.
Do I have a second? Second. It has been moved in properly second.
Aye.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is a property damage agreement between the counties approving a.
Excuse me, Chuck. Do you have two of those or just the one?
It's just one.
Okay.
Property damage release between Clayton County and Clerk in Sinclair and Mahfuz. I'll just give the clerk a copy of this, in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-five cents relating to an accident that occurred on March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two at O'Near Highway fifty-four East. And this is for property damage only. Authorize the chairman who is designated to execute the agreement and the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary to reflect appropriate revenues, source, and expenses required.
So move, Madam Vice Chair. Come on, Commissioner Davis.
Wait, no, that didn't make you make.
No, you don't have to.
Second.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our final item is to authorize the rate scale for Gerard and Davis to represent Commissioner Franklin in the amount of up to three hundred seventy-five dollars an hour to, in the matter of Bivins versus Franklin.
So move.
What? Can you make the motion?
Maybe the three of us. I can make the motion, or no?
Yes.
Does it matter? Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, okay. Second. It's been moved in properly second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposedes?
Nay.
Motion carries. Nope. He said nay. He said nay, but we are two. Oh, yeah, right, yeah. Motion carries. Amen. Okay. Any, anything else to be voted on? Okay. I still used to count on the three.
Human Resources, we have two. One is going to be a step increase, and one would be a reclassification. I'll start with the step increase. On behalf of the Sheriff's Department, we are requesting a step increase for Chief of Staff Levon Allen from grade thirty-four, step ten, total compensation a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four twenty-three, to Chief of Staff, grade thirty-four, step twenty-eight, total compensation a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. The difference is thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one, but the cost can be absorbed by the Sheriff's Department's budget.
So move. Second. It's been moved in second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Okay, thank you. The next one we have is a reclassification. On behalf of Senior Services, Human Resources is requesting to reclassify Aging Program Administrator from grade twenty-five, step fifteen, to grade twenty-six, step thirteen. The cost is modest at three thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, but I would like to add that it would be slightly greater than that when we add total compensation.
So move.
Second.
Motion care, I mean, motion by Commissioner Franklin, second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Do we have anything else? Yes, we're hungry. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Second. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.